I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Everyone, come please.
Lois Tylee?
Present.
Diane Dennis?
Here.
Marie Rowe?
Here.
Richard Warner?
Here.
Michael Nesbit?
Present.
Kathy Harris?
Here.
And Sarah Tylee?
Here.
Are there any adjustments to the agenda? If not, do you have a motion to approve it?
One adjustment, new business, letter F, and we'll call it Mid-Michigan Waste Authority.
Mid-Michigan what?
Mid-Michigan Waste Authority.
Where at?
F.
F, new business.
F, new business. If there's no other changes, your motion except the agenda is amended?
I'll make a motion too, please. I'm sorry, turn around.
Support?
Support.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Pose? Carry? Slow writer. Announcements and public comments, anybody got anything they wish to share? If you do, come on up front.
I bet.
I've asked several times, sent pictures. They've been going on for three months. I've had water sitting behind my house every time it rains. We're the lowest spot in the neighborhood. I've got no place to pump it. I can't even put a sump pump in because by pumping out, it's coming right back. Now I've got mold underneath my house. I've asked him to go to look at it, Mr. Ackerman too. Even the drains that are there aren't clean. We've got a problem with the drains that are on the corner that are the closest to me, but I've still got no place to drain it. I've got issues with that. It's mold and like I said, I can't even put a sump pump in. I don't know what to do. I pay my taxes, just like everybody else that's got a drain. I have none. Another, maybe what, 100, 200 feet would do the job. I don't think anybody down that road's got it. I mean, that's, that's the flood plain. You want the water to go out of there as fast as possible, but there's no place for it to go. I'm the lowest spot in the neighborhood. It comes to my backyard. You have not come back. You haven't called me. You've got my number. I have heard nothing from either one of you guys about that. And then, the other thing was, the ordinance with the commercial vehicles in town. I have not heard nothing back from that.
You won't until we get-
I've asked you several times-
Until we get done with the zoning ordinances, you won't hear nothing.
Well, I'm just telling you, I'd like it repealed, terminated, whatever.
Have you come to-
A selective ordinance or selective law is no law, is no ordinance. You're selecting just certain people and it's wrong. Okay, you say it's complaint based. Who complains? You won't tell me. I asked you before to put a complaint form out, put it out so maybe we can resolve the problem. You won't do it. I've asked you several times.
We don't have the authority.
Well, you let the law store, you have to write it down and make a paragraph?
Let them speak. No response. We are here to listen.
Alright.
I asked you simply to make some kind of complaint form, have them put their name down, what the problem is, date and time. Maybe we can resolve this without me having to keep coming up here. Yet it said nothing about it. There's tons of people that are violating the ordinance, just the same as I was. Whether they're a van or a truck, whatever, it's got LLC or whatever on the side of it, it's a commercial vehicle. Over 2,400 pounds is what I was told. So why are you picking on me? It's wrong. You gotta deal with it. Do away with it or do it to everybody, not just one or two people. Just like Jeff Paul, same thing. You did the same thing to him. He's a tow truck driver in this town and he's gotta park outside of town now. Why? Well, you got TJ's parked in front of your place. I mean, what, is there a conflict interest there?
In the town. And that ain't my place.
I didn't say it. Well, you've got an office right there, parked right in front of your place. Yeah, I think there's a little conflict interest there. But I do need some of this resolved. The drains, Dolly, is a must. I mean, skeeters haven't been bad this year. As far as the mold underneath my house, I don't want to get sick. I don't want my family getting sick. I don't want to lose my house. That needs to be taken care of. I have no place to pump it. I have to take a pipe or something and go either underneath or across the neighbor's yard even to get to the drain that doesn't drain. So I don't know what else to do, but I said my piece, so hopefully we can get something resolved. It's been months and nothing's even been done. Haven't even got so much as a phone call. Thanks.
I will speak to the owner's ordinance part. This is the 153 pages, 14 chapters of just the zoning amendments that we are looking at. It is not to the pre-public draft hearing yet. We will go over this twice before Rowe comes back. Again, not even to the code part, which I imagine will be another 40 pages. That's where that issue will be addressed. We have discussed his issue in the code part. We're not there yet, but 153 pages of just zoning. This is a 10-year update. It's very methodical and deliberate in what we're doing. And we'll meet next week and try to get through half of it. And then we'll get through the next half and then we'll go to the public for public comment. Thoughts, concerns, issues they see or have with it, before bringing it to council for approval or adjustments. So, I will speak to that.
That zoning meeting, or that meeting where they're doing that, isn't that an open meeting?
It is.
You have a right to participate or go and listen.
He has. He has. He was part of the discussion as we worked on the code side, as we're looking at, you know, Steve Harris on the, on that board or commission actually was a truck driver as well, so he has a little experience in that. They went back and forth. It was a productive meeting, I thought, so.
Well, nobody wants to see these businesses go away or even have to hide their vehicles or park outside of town. But it just seems like you're just doing it just to serve a few, and that's wrong. See, it's either everybody or nobody. And you're selecting certain people and it's wrong. You say it's complaint based, but you won't come up with the names. To me, that's just saying you're full shit.
A little decorum, that's when you be appreciated, sir.
Well, I'm just saying.
No need for that.
Alright, I'm just saying. The drainage system is old in that area and it's poor. It's a flood plain, but it's close to the river down there.
Well, I know, but we can't push it to it.
Well, I know the one, the county one that runs from the pump or whatever it is, they're down underneath my parents' place. And I think that's tied into that, correct?
I don't, it's not-
It's gotta drain somewhere.
It's not tied, I don't think, directly to that county drain.
Well, the thing is, we said something and I mean, most time when it rains, that just fills right up. HVAC in there or something, pop, 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 take out. They had some high-pressure thing that they put in there. It flushed the whole thing out. Took all that sediment out there and filled that little thing up down there.
But if you look at that, that's like a mound there, that's tight to the river, whenever that's water.
It's way low right now, I'm just saying.
No, I know, but like when you get flooded, that's when you, when the river comes out.
I get it, but then like, like I said, if it comes up, if it comes up, how fast can it go down if there's no drain? It's not, it's just gonna set there.
Or it's gonna go down as the river goes down.
Well, it's gonna go down, but it's still set to my backyard. I can throw literally, throw decoys out there and call ducks in. I'm not joking you because there's that much water in my backyard.
Let's move on. Is there, anybody else have any comments or anything? Any of the visitors who wanted to speak or something? You look apes yourself.
My name is Jeff Roy. I'm running for Saginaw County Commissioner of District 6. I just want to introduce myself and let you know that I really like to win this and support the area. This is my wife, Gotti. We raise four kids together. Lived in Chesapeake pretty much my whole life. Owned a business there pretty much my whole life. I'm a third-generation family member there. And I've got a pretty good resume of a lot of things I've done. Being a business owner, Chesapeake demands you do a lot for them, so. Some of the things I'm on right now, I'm on Brady Township zoning board, so. When you're writing your ordinance, we're kinda going through the same thing right now. Pretty interesting. And I sit on the Fire Board Authority right now. I've been on the DVA, Parks and Recreation, volunteered coaching and a lot of other things through the Chesapeake area. And I just wanted to stop, introduce myself and hopefully I can keep coming back here. And some of the paperwork I got, if you scan that, we'll go to, I have a Facebook page. That seems to be the best way for everybody to get ahold of me. You scan that. If you've got any messages, you can message me through there or anything like that and I'll try to respond the best way I can. Thank you. I'm a barber by trade, if that's what you're asking.
No, I'm just saying, you're running for what?
Chesapeake, or Saginaw County Commissioner, District 6.
Okay, so I'm saying, would your background any politics background?
No, nope, nope, never been, except for the zoning board in Brady Township. Other than that, as a barber, I try to stay out of the politics because it could hurt you in a small town. So that's why I did the Parks and Recreation and all the other things, the volunteer.
So you bring in his barbering to him?
Yes. I worked with him for years and then I bought it from him and since he passed, now I haven't owned it, so. You know, but as, actually, running as an office, this will be my biggest thing. If you'd like one of these, I'd be more than happy to. I need to sell and park a lot of talk to you and I'll rehearse.
Thank you, Jim.
Thank you.
Anyone else? Anyone else? Let's move on. Spicer Engineering report?
I'll speak to that. As our water system and drainage is old and outdated and needs improvement, we've been working diligently. We've met with Spicer every week for the last four weeks to work on Phase 1, which we're hoping between 2.25 million to upgrade our sewers, our water mains, the roads. We went after the Category B grant, $500,000 to fix our roads. As part of this, they like when you combine it with a water main and system upgrade and improvements. I know Paul's area would probably be in Phase 2, part of Phase 1. Again, we're looking between 2.25 million and $5 million of upgrades. Not a lot of grants for that. There is the Drinking Water Revolving Fund through the state, which is funded through the EPA. We've looked at that route. We've looked at the USDA Rural Development Route for a loan. We don't qualify for a grant. And as of Monday, we're thinking about looking at the county drainage system and Brian Wendling, perhaps a loan through them. Interest rate's a little higher, 3.5 compared to a 2.67, 1.5 through the others. But they will help pay for the private lead service line upgrades, which USDA would not. And there are other things through the state, the other bureaucratic red tape that we'd have to jump through that I'd rather not. So hopefully we, we're gonna meet again next week as we continue to try to improve what's underneath our roads, our houses, et cetera, et cetera. So we continue that work, as well as the Drinking Water Asset Management Plan has been completed. But we've been giving references for Pipe Tech, who I thought did a pretty good job. Kinda in quickly, there is extra funding that we received through that grant that we're gonna try to either verify more homes, do more lead service line checks, or to even, I don't know, upgrade something within the, whatever the state would allow. So, City of Brighton called this week and we gave Pipe Tech a nice, nice reference. Out of doing 200 homes, I think we had 10 calls about their yards were a little ripped up and they came back twice to fix it up. Some people just, I'll do it myself, but for the most part, great company, so. That work continues with Spicer. As we mentioned earlier, John Olson will be semi-retiring at the end of the year. He'll be more looking over plans next year and will be, I don't want to say stuck with Mitchell and Neil, but will be with Mitchell and Neil, who are very competent engineers. And I think Don, we have a pretty good working relationship with them as well. So that is what's going on with Spicer and our water system improvements.
Anyone have any questions? Move on to the council minutes of June 8. Is there any changes or anything to the minutes of June 8? If not, do your motion to approve and file?
I'll make a motion to approve the council minutes for June 8.
Support?
Support.
All of the favor?
Aye.
Pose? Carry? Moving on to communications. Straight lines from Spicer's.
This is Spicer's Spring Magazine. We are, I believe, the last article. Yep, page 16, Drinking Water Infrastructure Management in the Village of St. Charles. Just a diceable article, kind of explaining what Pipe Tech did, what we helped do according to the Michigan Clean Water Plan, as well as the DWAM grant we received, $397,000. We're really ahead of the game when it comes to this. A lot of municipalities are just beginning this process, Chesapeake for one, Vassar another, so. Hopefully, we're going after the grant money before anybody else completes their DWAM and kinda we're the first ones knocking on the door with our hands out, so.
So exactly, Spicer's doing just, just lining everything up, see where everything goes, what are they doing?
I'll let you read the article. You can have mine.
Yeah, just you have, what's going on with Spicer?
Well, there's a, there's a law in copper law of 2018, the state of Michigan requires that all municipalities determine what kind of service lines are going into homes. And if they're galvanized and lead, we are required to replace them 18 inches into the home. So, well, we're required to, it's unfunded mandate, so we have to do it by 2025.
Spicer's isn't an engine, I mean, they're not, they're not excavators and stuff like that.
Nope, that's where we bid out to excavators, who we came in, I think $170,000 under the next company.
You're just gonna put water services in? You're gonna put storm drains, sewers, water mains?
This project, this DWAM project was service lines and identifying service lines that were required to do by law. The Phase 1 of the project, which I think is most interest you, will be a different grant or loan.
So I know there's a lot of, probably a lot of water mains in this town that council would break.
Correct, and that's-
I know a lot of them are probably from 30s, 40s or whatever.
Yep, yeah.
A lot of them's cast.
Yep.
If possible, to tap into that.
Correct. So we just replaced, I think it was $490,000 last year for the Fulton Hosmer project. So we're looking for ways to do the work without, you know, breaking the backs of the taxpayers or bankrupting the village, which I think is wise.
But they given us the money for the water services. I mean, you've seen, you've seen the, like, getting rid of the lead pipes. I mean, how much, what percentage of the town still has lead pipes?
If I had to guess, 20%.
Well, that'd be galvanized. They actually consider galvanized lead too.
Based on our, the $397,000 that we just used, I would say 20%. And that's, galvanized has to be treated as lead.
Yeah, it has to be. So when you hear lead service line, it's galvanized also.
So very few lead, mostly galvanized.
Mostly galvanized.
Well, I'm just trying to say, if you're gonna replace that, I work for Wooten, I've got, I know who Wooten is. Whitey Wooten. Yeah, we've replaced it before. And like I said, if you're trying to put a saddle on one of the cast pipes, you're trying to put a new service in, especially old pipes, it's gonna crack. And then you're just gonna end up having to replace everything anyways.
We're gonna replace everything. It's gonna probably be four, four to five-phase, 30-year project, but.
Phase 1, we're just starting at the worst and working our way all this money along.
Two to, two to $5 million every time we do it.
Sounds like a lot of money, but don't-
Doesn't go very far. Pipe that was $30 last year was $100 this year.
And that's all?
A foot.
Kind of like, is that with nylon?
Pecan.
It'll be PVC, but it'll mostly be new stuff. And service lines will be concrete.
Any other discussion on that?
Nope. Little, little good plug for Spicer. It was like, I'm sure they're trying to get into other municipalities, but really show us what we're doing and kind of ahead of the game.
Move on to payment claims. Anyone have any questions on the? Payment claims? There's no questions. Your motion to pay the-
I'll make a motion-
Please.
To, to approve the payment claims in the amount of $241,748.34.
Support for the motion?
Second.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Pose? Motion's carried. New business, 457 comparison?
My friend Leah's here from MERS to kind of give a synopsis of what we're looking at. We're gonna have turnover in the village relatively soon as far as employees. And this is one way that where I think the village can save money while providing a better service for future employees. Especially if they are, I'm not gonna say they're younger, they could be younger, but it gives them options for their future and doesn't leave money on the table, which I think we're doing right now. So, Leah, take it with.
Hi, thank you. Leah Banky, I am from MERS. I am pretty local though. I live actually right here in Midland, the family here in St. Charles. What I tried to do is really condense this comparison, so you have that all in front of you. But ultimately, I'm gonna kind of point out a few things over the next five minutes and then shoot some questions my way. What we did is we looked at your current provider of a 457. We can just do it and we showed you what, what it means in dollars. Ultimately, this first, this comparison has about four or five pages on fiduciary responsibility, which really speaks to the board. This is a big move for MERS because we take over that fiduciary responsibility and liability off the municipalities throughout Michigan because we're running the plan for you. We run all of our plans free of charge to the municipality. And then, when it comes to fees, who pays for this, it's the participants, those who invest in the plan with the 457, employees. Anybody who gets paid through the village can use it if they want to. They can stop using it if the bills are too tight and start up at any time. So all of the same 457 rules apply. We can do all that. We can just do it less expensive for them, for that employee. That really stands to what the comparison was and it really speaks directly on page, kind of quickly, would be page, starting on page 15. We actually took the money that the current village members have invested. We looked at it plan-wise, as the whole plan, what, what they're invested in now, compared it to the like funds at MERS. And if we can see on the top of that page, Mission Square, the investor is paying 1.25%, whereas if they would be invested at MERS, they'd be paying .42%. Seems like a small difference, but if you put that in annual terms, that means they're paying $12.50 per every thousand dollars they have invested, whereas at MERS, they'd be, just moving to decimal, be paying $4.20 per every thousand, a difference of $8.30. We don't want to just say we're the least expensive. We dug into how the performance was. So in those current, what, what the employees are currently invested in now, we, we did a rate of return and MERS would be outperforming Mission Square at the one-year, five-year, 10-year. So we're overperforming by 2% at the, at the one-year. Really, if you're comparing apples to apples, that should be very similar. The market's just up and down right now. So the overall point is, we're doing better performance-wise and it's less expensive to invest through MERS. What that means on a bigger scale, the next three pages kind of talk about a typical participant. And on page 17, it shows you those small difference in fees. A typical participant, we put a name to her, Sarah, would invest over their career at a 5% rate, a 5% contribution and a 7% rate of return. Well, they would, if they were investing with MERS over what they're currently investing in, they would invest $74,000 more for their career. And we do put Sarah in retirement on the next page. But otherwise, besides those few pretty important things, the fiduciary responsibility and the fact that we're less expensive and performing better at this time. I think most of you are familiar with MERS. We are full-service. We're here to help the employers, the employees. We come in for education. We do that all anyways and we hope to do it and also include the 457 for you. So what kind of questions are there?
What is a 457?
It is a municipal-
A stock option?
It is like a 401K. So most people in the public, it's a, it's an IRS tax code. To make geeky stuff sound exciting, it's all in the IRS tax code and it's just for wage earners to save money with a tax advantage. The 401K is for the, the private sector and the 457 is specifically for a municipality. So of course, the municipality has to say yes, we will administer it. Luckily, MERS does that for free and then-
Like you're saying for free, how can you do anything?
It's all in the investment fees. So, so the employee pays the investment fees and, and as we've kind of shown in that, that comparison, it's less expensive than what you're currently paying.
Do the employees know? I mean, I mean, I don't really know. I know there's no union, so.
This is entirely optional. We do bring in MERS. I've tried to do a better job of letting employees know what their options are when it comes to investing in their futures.
Do they have a say in it, the employees that are doing it?
100% optional. I'll say it again louder.
Yeah, yeah, and when it comes to 457s, the, the board can choose to not have one. It's excellent that you have one. And it's up to the board what, what company you use to administer it. MERS is a, we operate as a not-for-profit, so the way we can bring down funds is we're pooling, we keep bringing in funds daily. We're at 11 billion in assets. The more dollars we bring in, having that fiduciary responsibility, we just come back and lower the, the cost. So it's more like you're operating more in a, pretty much the same way you operate. Where we're looking out for your best interest. We have to compare the fees and bring down the, the cost for, truly, I'm one of those beneficiaries, is using a 457.
You have to have so many employees in order to have it?
You don't, with MERS, we, we cost it out for everybody across the state the same. Whereas other companies do say, hey, you have four employees, two may use it. We're maybe gonna charge you more expensive fees, where we look at all of our employees and we, we do not require you have anybody. So you could open up a 457 and nobody joins. Of course, us, we have an education team that specific, reaches out once a year and comes here and talks about the other plans. Whereas, they're gonna hopefully encourage people to save for their future, but you can open up a 457 and not, nobody joins. That part doesn't matter to us.
I, I would say since Hart's been here every year, he has had MERS come in and we all get one-on-one time to talk about our retirement, what's available, what it's gonna look like.
I don't want anybody to be surprised. I want it, and it also helps us figure out, you know, I don't want to say when Tito leaves, but gets an idea when, when Tito's leaving and gives us, you know, we can plan for the future. And then as we replace employees, this gives younger employees options that they might want. Again, it'll lower costs to the village.
Does the village match them? 15% or 10%? Dollar for dollar?
No match at this time.
Hardly.
Yeah.
Any other thoughts or questions?
Just that example on, on page 17, Sarah quote-unquote is leaving $74,000 in retirement dollars on the table.
Yeah, and those-
If we don't help.
Yeah, yeah, and, and if those who are closer to retirement can look at Sarah the next page, that, that puts her in retirement. Because some people say, oh, Leah, thanks for coming by. I'm two years away from retirement. Well, this gives an example of, hey, even in retirement, if, again, just comparing the fees alone, everything else being the same, Sarah can draw $557 more a month based on fees alone. So I, we like to show this example because we hear, oh, a half a percent different or a percent different. Doesn't sound like a lot, but it adds up over time. If the, the village does decide to go with MERS, I would be that individual that works alongside to help transfer the current company to, into MERS. I'm, I'm doing a lot of that right now. Other thoughts or questions that I can answer?
So the 457, I'm just trying to understand, is the 457 is like, you said similar to a 401K?
Similar, yeah. There's just different rules on when you can take it out. And the beauty of a 457 is you can take out, most other people in America leave their plan and they can, they have to wait until they're 59 and a half, whereas a 457, no matter what company you're at, full disclosure, in the IRS tax code says, when you leave your plan, you can access that, those dollars, the pre-tax dollars, immediately without a 10%. Yeah, great, great question. It's a great tool. And we'll, we'll tout that when we come for education too. Even, even now, at least Candace comes for education and she finds out, even if it's not our 457, she's like, go sign up for your 457. It's, it's just great for everybody to save a little more for their future.
Hart, this is, no, they don't have the same program that I have, or I have, I guess, in retirement, right?
This is, this is above and beyond, so retire- This is, this is above and beyond, so retirement, it is a supplemental program, so that's where you hate to compare it to a 401K, cause some people use 401Ks for retirement, you know, their employer puts in. People do here too, but most of our municipalities have a different retirement and they open up a 457 just because they can and use it, use it under the IRS tax code. So this is more or less for, most of our employees have another retirement and choose to save in this. And they can go, they can save a percentage or a dollar amount, they can save for three months and stop saving because something came up in their family.
Is this something you sit down with people for? I mean, is it a straight line thing or can you put it in something like, something more aggressive?
Yep, yep, so our investments is, and some employees probably have already heard this, have great opportunity in our investment menu and our lineup. That's what the rate of return showed, is that those options that MERS has compared to what you currently have. And it's not like what you currently have is really, really bad, we just do this more on a not-for-profit status. So it's, we have a whole team, an investment team that looks around for the best investments and puts it on the menu. And we also, most of our members do not do their own investment, they let MERS do that for them, so we also have that too.
And they can stop when times are hard and start it back?
That's right. Just the idea, systematic investing, a 457 has to go through payroll.
So they're taking taxes out because it's going through payroll, is that what you're saying?
Yeah, well, you do.
It's different because when you put it into a 401K, they don't tax it, right? Until you pull it out and put it in a Roth or whatever?
Yeah, and I'm uncertain, you guys may have just the pre-tax option now and in the MERS 457, depending on what box you check, you can have a pre-tax option, which is, we don't tax it now, we, you put it in your own investments, it grows and you pay taxes when you take it out in retirement. Or you have the Roth 457 option, you can pay your taxes first, put it in, let it grow tax-free, and then when you take it out, you pay no taxes. So we have those two different options, we will definitely come in and educate everybody about their options whenever you'll have us. A lot of the employees probably have heard this over and over. If they'll listen. If they show up.
Thank you very much for all the information.
Thank you.
Move on to the MERS annual actual evaluations.
So we received our actuarial evaluation as of December 31st, 2021. As we've discussed in the past, when I got here, we were 59% funded, which triggered a warning from the state requiring us to do a little extra work. And a lot of reports on how we're gonna get out of the triggered area and what we're doing to better our investments. But at the same time, what are we doing to help our retirees, to make sure their payments are always gonna be there? Legislation was passed to help backfill some pension obligations, but mostly for more urban areas that are 24 to 46 million in unfunded liabilities, we are not there. But happy to announce at the end of last year, we are 70% funded, so. That's partly to what you've done as far as the annual surplus policy that we passed almost three years ago, which we will address in the coming months to see if we wanna keep and continue that, which I think is, I think we only decided on 25% of any surplus funds to go towards that. But the work is getting done and it's great news as we continue to try to get 100% funded by 2034. Again, we're just trying to honor the employees of the past with their monies while kinda making sure that we're smartly budgeting for the future and giving employees options and choice for their future as well. Great news and just wanted to share that with you guys. So thank you for what you've done to help us get here.
Question?
Next month we'll have the audit, so we'll go over this in greater detail, but something to consider before we get there.
Move on to MERS Workman Compensation Fund trustee.
Every year I ask for your blessing to vote for candidates. Sometimes I write in friends or people I know that are in the industry. This year we only have one candidate that's vying, but I'd be happy to write in managers who are trustworthy and I've met at conferences or went to graduate school with. Again, just wanna make sure that you're aware of everything going on. So this is the Workers' Comp Fund, just a trustee position. Nothing too special, but if you grant me the permission to vote, I'd gladly do that on behalf of the village.
Any questions? Do I hear a motion to give him permission to vote?
I'll make a motion to give him permission to vote.
Hold a second.
All of them favor?
Aye.
Opposed? You have permission.
Awesome.
Item D, Code Enforcement Building Inspector.
When we hired Scott, it was to be the zoning and building inspector, not Civil Infractions Code Enforcement, which he has been doing a lot of. So I've kinda reached out to other municipalities to see what they are paying Scott. Since we are about to be through this zoning rewrite and code rewrite with Civil Infractions Police, quote-unquote, police powers, to increase his pay, again, we're not done with this side of it yet, so we don't have to increase it immediately, but this is something we need to consider. Other municipalities are paying him much double what we're paying him for the same amount of time. And I feel bad if we're gonna be sending him to court, if we're going to ask him to go to homes and find people. I feel like we need to address this in the coming budget at the latest, sooner or whenever the zoning and code enforcement gets approved. But I just wanted to, again, bring this to your attention as I've done some research and Scott works very hard for the village. It is a thankless job. He gets a lot of gruff, as you can imagine. But something that we will need to certainly address very soon. He's very thorough, doesn't, is a fine job.
Anyone have any questions? Any action we need, I'm sorry.
Should we not go ahead with it tonight?
That's why I was just gonna ask.
We certainly can, if you, if you...
I'm all agree that the man needs a lot more money than we could pay him, but we should pay him more than we're paying him now.
I agree.
And like you said, it needs double.
But I would love to have him for five days a week to do this full-time, but unfortunately that's just not reality, but...
Bigger town's got bigger budgets too, we're a small little village, so gotta stick with reality too.
I think that...
The other towns are paying double, smaller?
Yep.
What towns?
I think that's a lot...
Townships, not even towns, townships.
Townships.
There's a lot of work involved here and I think it deserves a thank you list, he has done an excellent job.
Yeah, yeah, I would like to see us, what's he making, a hundred and thirty?
$137 a week.
A week, why can't we give him $200 a week?
It's in the budget, we budgeted for it.
Could we give him $237 a week?
We sure could.
Well, I make a motion, we give Scott $237 a week.
Support.
Roll call please.
Roll call on that.
Lois Tiley?
Yes.
Diane Dennis?
Yes.
Marie Rowe?
Hey.
Richard Horner?
Yes.
Michael Nussbaum?
Yes.
Kathy Harris?
Yes.
And Sarah Tiley?
Yes.
Motion's carried.
Did you find out what the other towns they made use for?
Thanks very much, yes.
Double. Double.
Moving on, item E, Safe Routes to Schools, Walking Audit Results.
So I've included our walking audit results from Safe Routes to School with the ISB, with Superintendent Benson, with the gentleman Adam Jenks from Lansing, just pointing out some of the flaws they found. We've tried to make corrections since on some of the little things that we could do, but again, we're ahead of the curve on this, we're one of the fierce municipalities that they're looking at for this larger grant. We're up for $660,000 to improve our infrastructure. Like that could be roads and sidewalks on Walnut, it could be streetlights, it could be just something safer for the kids. It could be a path through Ithaca safely to get to the school. Lots of options, but this was the initial, initial review, we'll be back out again and we'll go over everything once again, but I wanted to make sure you had this. Just showing uneven sidewalks, we've tried to improve some of the sidewalks, the grass. There was wires hanging from telephone lines that we've since put pool noodles on and taped up and trimmed back near the campus on Maple Street. But I did find out that even though if the school combines the middle high school and uses the other building for storage, we can still qualify, quantify that building as used so that we can go back after the $660,000 and not just the 440, so. Huge, you know, huge in our mind and trying to get Adam to make us the pilot area for what they're trying to do. So it went really well and hopefully we get all 660 again and that's fun to help streets and roads and sidewalks and, you know...
Lighting.
Lighting. Something that the village can help control costs, we'll do it. Any grant is normally a good grant.
What is this whole one, the first page to render decides is, you know, on Ford Maple Street?
Pardon?
I'm looking at the first page.
Large turn radiai and no marked crossing?
No, it's near 140 maybe.
Oh, that's, that's, it's like a...
Is it kinda like a drain or something?
It's like a little old drain, I think, I don't think it's abandoned, but when they, we did the first walking out it, it was sticking out of the ground, so we sprayed it orange and by the second one, it was already two inches into the ground, so that's a red flag right there.
It was undone with frost.
Yeah, yeah. Yeah.
This is mostly, mostly it's this time and information.
Correct, we're still working, the next meeting hasn't been set up yet, but it's a lot of work, but it's a good group of people and again, $660,000 to use for infrastructure upgrades.
I guess, is this my imagination or the streets, main streets getting worse?
Not getting worse, not, no imagination.
Okay. Let's move to F mid Michigan, I couldn't write that fast.
Our 10-year contracts with the Mid Michigan Waste Authority and Waste Management is coming to an end, so this past year, MMWA, we're considered trustees as members of the authority. The executive committee have done a lot of work going out to bid legal documents to try to figure out what's best for every community. We are in Zone One, I believe the township is Zone Four. So they're looking for what we want to do as far as our recycling, our trash and our yard waste. And so the main form that I provided with you is the comparisons of Zone One between priority waste and waste management. And Zone One is approximately 22,000 residents. St. Charles is 779 of that. So as you can see, the threshold for lower prices is about 21,000, but we've already reached 21,270 residents based on calls I've made to the other zones and what they're gonna do. And they're all going with waste management, weekly trash. They haven't said completely, but there is every other week recycling yard waste options. But the caveat there is instead of the little bins, we're gonna be getting those 96 gallon, big roller, roller ones. So I was thinking that we could go every other week if you have a bin that big. Free of charge, if you want an extra, it is $24, but the two will be dropped off. And there would be a cost savings for the first year. Again, depends on the threshold, if we somehow reach 31,000, it would go down, but be cost saving year one, a $5 increase year two, $10 year three, but that's to stay with waste management. And if people don't want carts, you could have up to 20% of people say, I don't want it. If you, more than 21%, then we have to go back to manual. Part of the reason they're moving to carts is there's a driver shortage as far as garbage people. That's why they're moving to carted service, it's faster, it's easier for them to cover more ground. There's no fuel surcharge from waste management, they're moving to compressed natural grass trucks, but I think they've tried that in the past. We'll see if it actually brings savings, but I'm not sure. There's 19 different pricing schemes via six different variables, so we have options. I think we should probably stick with what people are comfortable with and just change up the carts and maybe give them the every other week option, or we can stick with the every, the weekly option, which is right out of the gate, it's about a $16 price increase.
Did he ever give you any kickback on how much of that is actually being used and the recycle part of it? Cause from what I'm seeing down my road, not a lot of people recycle, not a lot of people do yard waste.
Well, down my road, I see recycle always.
Yep.
Well, there's a few that do it, I'm not saying nobody does it, I'm just saying...
The only, the only municipality of everybody in the Waste Authority that doesn't participate is the township. And I don't know what they're doing and I, I know that they've discussed it, I believe.
We've had discussions.
No decisions have been made, but...
We could save a bunch of money by, we got a, got a facility out there where we dump our leads and our brush and whatevers, I mean...
That's the yard waste side, that's the yard waste side. You can go no yard waste and weekly trash, weekly recycling, new yard waste.
It's saving us a bunch of money.
It's saving us $15 to get rid of yard waste.
A year.
That's a year, $15 a year.
There's a lot...
Ah, a year.
There's a lot of people that can't take their yard waste.
It is, it is probably one of the most frequent calls we get is yard waste, brush, things of that nature.
Yeah, we haven't heard anything, so we need to be able to put it...
But we did just give Scott a pay raise, that $15 could help.
And they take everything, I mean, everything.
That's tongue-in-cheek.
We have to give it to Scott. Recycling every other week?
No.
I think it's a great idea, Hart.
Keep working, keep doing the race.
For the recycling every other week with carts, I think, I don't think it's that bad.
They're 96 gallons, it's not like it's tiny. The other thing is it's better for wintertime, you got a roller instead of walking out. It's covered, so you don't have to worry about critters, you don't have to worry about wind.
We gotta think about our old paper ball hauling it out there.
Correct, I mean...
There's a lot of...
There's a lot of positives, right?
It's true.
You can get a smaller cart for E2 if you want.
Will they be charged for different sizes?
I don't believe so.
They're probably not that heavy.
They will give you the large one first and then...
And if you don't want it, you can swap it out at no charge.
And up to 20% don't have to use the cart.
Correct, so, okay.
I guess if I can say something.
Wait, 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 Mr. Ackerman, are you speaking as a village resident, as a township supervisor or the DPW superintendent?
I was speaking as BPW superintendent. During a snowstorm, people put recyclings out, they end up scattered everywhere, I mean, even trash.
Are you saying you hit the recycling with your plow trucks?
No, the snow, the snow winter might, but we don't, we never hit anything.
Okay. Strike that from the right.
But, you know, in the winter time, the recycling, the wind blows it, I mean, it's not made your house that, by the railroad tracks, it catches, the wind blows and all that stuff blows in there and over time it creates a mess, I mean, that's...
And if we put it out the night before, which...
You could put it out the night before, not...
And then it all snows, fills in and...
But I mean, with these carts, you probably could.
Trash can do the same thing.
And to Don's point, you can't ask for a 64 gallon cart and there's six months amnesty where if 64 isn't enough, you know, you can get the 96, if 96 is too much, you can match one to 64.
And it says in here too that even if your carts are full, you can still place your bags outside the cart. You don't have to buy another one here.
And you still get your two bulk items, it's not much changes from the rules.
I like the idea of every other week recycling, every week the trash, I really do.
Oh, you mentioned Hart. There's no fuel surcharge built in any of these campaigns.
I did say that.
Okay, that's pretty important, I think.
We need to, we need to make a decision on that.
Uh, I, a recommendation.
Recommendation, it's just a
Now you, you can uh, elect to go with the weekly trash, every other week recycling yard waste uh, with waste management or
If we go every other week on this, does that mean yard waste has to be every other, everything is every other week?
Just, just yard waste and recycling.
Oh.
Trash would be weekly, correct. And again, that's, I guess, from what I hear, there's a, a driver shortage or a truck shortage, a driver shortage.
So in that case, we need a motion to push.
Yep. So Swan Creek is the only township in zone one. James Saginaw Township, Swan Creek, St. Charles Village, Thomas Township. And everyone else went with waste management carts. I believe most, I believe most people have. Was it City of Saginaw is the only one that caught us off guard?
Sure, they have those carts too, don't they? No?
They have a different company.
They're for Republic or something?
Maybe Granger.
Maybe Granger, yeah.
But they have the carts.
They're the big carts, yeah. You see them at work, yeah.
Sure, I'm not sure.
So we've been working on this what, over a year now to try to get this whole thing put together, to bid out. There was over five companies that bid. It's a, it's a big deal.
How are we reading this motion? Okay.
Um, it would be waste management carts, every other week yard waste and
I'll make a motion.
I mean, is it
To, to
To do every week garbage pickup and every two weeks, the recycling and yard waste.
Through waste management?
For waste management.
I'll second that.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
opposed?
And this will go to the Waste Authority for their, their vote next month.
Thank you. For the research.
Yeah. It's been fun.
Moving on to departmental reports. DPW report. Where do you catch reports, huh?
The law equality reports were delivered by July first by law. You should have the little postcard. And uh, I don't know how many people actually read them, but if they go online, there's all kinds of good information. We have no violations as a drinking water system, so that was out. Uh, East Maple Lift Station, we had one more event where it was plugged and they pulled the pumps due to, uh, adult wipes, I guess, that are supposed to be flushable, but they're not. So
Are you still getting mops?
Not so. It's mostly, I think, adult wipes is what it is. They get tangled up and they slow the pumps down and they have to be pulled and cleaned and all that kind of stuff, so. On the streets, uh, just the routine mowing. And we did uh, patching and then, as you said, painted the parking lots and crosswalks this last month. On the parks, we did haul, I think it was like uh, fifty yards of sand to the place gate to get it back up to grade and there's some concrete showing and stuff. We did have to get a large oak tree removed at the park. We would normally cut it ourselves, but the the wind had broke off a big top of it and we didn't feel safe cutting it down because in the process of taking it down, it could have came down on us. So we had to hire someone to cut the top out of it and get it on the ground, so. Then we did um, put up, I believe it's for Hart's Safe Schools, the ten storyboards are up at the park. So, on the walkway there.
Can I ask you who cleaned out, who cleaned the flower things on the curbs?
Uh, it's been a joint collaboration, I think.
Between who?
We've, the village has worked on some and I see Bob has been working on some too, so.
By the village, but when you say the village, who?
Uh, the village DPW has, we've worked on some, um, or has worked on some.
Marg, Marguerite went out on her watch.
Marguerite went out, helped. It's
It's never ending.
Yeah, it's never, never ending.
They had a lot of people out today. Uh, John donated whatever plants he had left, so they put them out today. Uh, let's see. We're hoping to hire a new hand next week.
Is that what you're having a problem with?
Correct. We have one. We're gonna have another. We've received, I think, just two applications. We got them into the schools. Retirees, welcome to. Anybody?
I mean, Jenna does a great job, but I think she only gives us what, ten dollars a week?
Yeah, she works for uh, mosquito obtained.
So it's just, it's a lot of work.
I, I, when I went and
Oh, I know. It's a lot of work.
Went to the park for dinner. She was pulling in to go pick weeds at five-thirty. She'll go five-thirty to six-thirty on top of what she's already doing. But we had another person started. We're doing the watering. Uh, Bart did, Jason did a nice job last week, pulling them out.
Yeah, they look real nice. It looks
This is probably the longest they've lasted in the years I've been here.
Looks real nice. Thank you.
Like I said, it's been a joint effort, but it's a lot of
Hold your thumb up. Is it green yet?
Yeah. We really don't
Are those paying, paying positions?
Yeah. Yep. I think it's ten dollars an hour.
Ten dollars an hour. Yeah, let's see availability. What can you work a week?
Twenty hours a week. That's what we're looking for, really.
How many people?
Any other questions?
Yeah, we're budgeted ten to twelve thousand per summer for, for roll and I think we don't use year week.
Well, I got a brother that works three days a week and sits at home doing nothing else.
Send him down.
That'd be perfect. He was out looking for a job yesterday, so.
Put his AirPods in, sit there and just pick weeds. It's not, it's not glorious, but people notice and appreciate it.
He could do that.
Just tell him they want it to look like your curb.
Right.
Yeah.
He sure doesn't help me with them weeds. That doesn't pay though.
We're actually wondering if you're gonna start taking over a little bit this way? Start doing it yourself for free?
Well, it crossed my mind. I do, I already do a lot for free, so.
Yeah, okay. It looks nice out there.
I've got a few neighbors, you know, down the road, whatever. If they got weeds and I can't, can't stand people that don't cut their grass.
That's all I have. Any questions, comments, concerns?
Any updates on vehicles?
We have a VIN number for the pickup. Uh, the dump truck has been delivered to Schultz Equipment in Ithaca. So it's, should be back, should be put together by fall, we hope.
Or maybe it's free.
But it was built a year and a half late, but they do have it.
We'll have it paid off before we go.
All right, too big of a time. Okay. But yeah, it's uh, as I said, the dump truck's the most critical thing. Hopefully uh,
So you got a new dump car, truck coming, but it's
We, what, ordered it a year and a half ago in COVID.
And it's in Ithaca.
Well, it was, the chassis was built. That was what they outfitted. They put the plow and the box and all that, which they have all that stuff. But getting the chassis here itself took a year and a half.
I'm really sorry. I was just looking for the police. So I got, I'll get some information about somebody. That's all. I'm sorry.
Thank you.
I think, I think our one we've been hanging on to is getting pretty tired. I mean, we have taken out so much well, but
We can't get another two years out of it yet?
I don't know.
We've been uh, patching that thing up. It's pretty costly.
It's, it's getting
Is it thirties, thirty?
Be thirty-one, I think.
Thirty-one years old?
We could put that in a museum.
It's like, it's life and
I don't know if it's gonna fit downtown. Too soon?
You guys get haggard. The insurance wouldn't be a church either.
We'll sell you a classic here soon.
Uh, okay. Thank you, Dad.
Let's skip ahead to uh, Scott and we'll get back to police report.
First of all, I wanna say thank you. Um, Hart had mentioned you working on something that I did not, did not expect, so thank you very much.
We appreciate you, Scott.
Thank you. For the month of June, we had four, four permits, um, three building, one electrical. They're only on two different addresses. Um, the first one on eight fifty-one Flint is for the house roof itself. And then they're putting in a new pole barn. Um, that's actually in a flood plain. It took them almost a year to get the permit approved. So they had to go through Eagle and get a permit to work in a flood plain. Um, it took a while with the uh, survey required and everything, but that's up and rolling. Uh, two seventeen, East Clinton, that was a fire and it's getting a complete rebuild. It's gutted inside. Um, so it'll be, uh, the outside wasn't gonna get a lot of touch up except where the siding and windows were damaged. Uh, some of the windows will get enlarged to a proper egress size. The stairway inside uh, will get moved, so it's code compliant. Um, uh, but that's gonna be up and moving here pretty quick. Um, ask for complaints?
As you can see, grass, grass complaints.
Uh, eighteen of them are already resolved. And uh, we're working on a bunch of the others. Actually, this morning, I think I resolved another four when I came into town. But I also added another four, so. It's ongoing. Uh, once the ordinances are done and our, our write-up is complete, um, there's a couple of properties that have had violations. Um, one of them since twenty-twenty. And that is going to be first on the list for some of those citations.
And some of the homes that you see that are frequent flyers or regulars that are not owned by individuals, they're owned by either they're sold at auction and owned by a company. One is, where was the, we had to write a letter down to
Six thirty, uh, South Carolina, less than
South Carolina? Yeah, we're writing letters out of state to let them know that we're gonna mow your lawn and put it on your taxes, but they don't even live in the state, so. Those are the, most calls we get are about these homes that aren't even owned by people, so it's tough. But you still gotta follow the process just so that they can't, you know.
Is it actually a person or is it some kind of a
It's a company, like a rural housing development.
Realty place?
It's not, it's not really. It's like a low income, like a mixed type, type deal buys it up, hoping to
That one is currently open vacant, so I also sent them a, a light letter. Get working on that. Danger is building a bait in on it. So that just went out this morning. And that's all I have. Do you have any questions?
Move on to the police report now? Anybody have any questions regarding her report? Does she have anything to say about her report?
Um, talked to the gentleman on the vehicle. We got the bin. We got everything and then he advised me it's not, it's moved back production date to the end of August. So he said something on my, my chips or, you know, whatever. COVID, I don't, I don't know. So he didn't have any answers, but um, we are also kinda in the waiting, um, as far as our vehicle. Allison was not gonna be able to make it tonight, but um, she was in today. Um, and she's done some eye lunges, as you see, kind of in a little of this, but I'm willing to anticipate her coming and, and uh, meeting up with you guys the next board meeting, so you can potentially meet our new officer, Scott, that's her.
Is that the one I was with you tonight earlier?
Are we gonna get a twenty-twenty-three cart? Being, being the, the twenty-threes will be out by the time we get
Yeah. No, we ordered the twenty-two hybrid, so that's probably what we're gonna get, but you don't, you don't know what that really means, so. And they did a great job. We had a token baby. You guys can read it in there and um, not many opportunities to, to uh, influence alike, but I'll tell you, it's a happy mom. They communicated with me that they uh, took care of that, so it's good.
Anyone have any questions?
Thank you.
Thank you. Let's move on to uh, public comment for the meetings then.
I got one question about the, the bins.
Yes.
Do you, does it say anywhere in there how many trash bags would fit in the biggest one?
Oh, I, it, huh, it does somewhere. It's It's like three to four, I think. Um, I'll check the frequently asked questions about carts. One, one cart is equal to three regular garbage cans. So not necessarily bags, but cans. So probably two, four, six. I'd say six to seven. Well, I don't know what you have. Probably if you have the big black ones, you can probably get three. If you have the little white ones, you can probably get six. Ninety-six gallons. Lot of garbage over there, huh?
Now, when will we know we're getting bins?
Uh, the timeframe, I believe, is next month. We'll go back to MMWA and uh, recommend this service for this area. And we'll get our pricing and zoning. We're hoping by end of August they have everything and uh, contract begins January one.
And then everybody be
It'll be a
It's usually delivered to them.
Correct. Yeah.
Anything further?
I, I did do extra research. Uh, they're trying to get more people to recycle. Um, if you want a sexy bin, go to Sweden.
Here's what I found.
I don't wanna, I don't research that on Google, but I am, to try to get more people to move to carts and things. It's, it's kind of a global thing, but very interesting. These carts actually talk to you?
Oh, I agree.
And say something like, hm, hm, more. Little more to the left next time. Come back quickly. Do that again. We're not gonna get those bins, but
Oh, come on.
There are options out there for the next contract. I don't know if you can record your own, but
There's nothing further. Do I hear a motion to adjourn?
Motion to adjourn.
Support.
Support.
All in favor?
Aye.
Thank you all for coming tonight. Appreciate your participation.